All right. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of June 25, 2024, at 7:19 in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. If we could, let's move the clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to discuss the July and August Planning Board meeting schedule first.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, talk about a few logistics. So likely because of the holiday schedule, the Select Board has changed their regular meeting date. And their regular meeting dates are the exact same ones that the Planning Board has typically met at. So we have a couple options. We can move our meetings to another location for July 9 and July 23. Or based on what we've got on our schedule, I am suggesting that the Board might consider meeting just once in July, on the 16th, in the week in between. For a couple of reasons. We've got four applications tonight. We don't have anything else currently scheduled in the pipeline. Received another application today that we're working on scheduling, but we can't advertise that really to get it on the agenda until likely August, based on advertising schedule. Because tonight, as we talk about these four special permits, we're going to likely be continuing them. So we need to have a date certain to continue to. So my question is to the Board, does the Board have a preference to meet elsewhere on the July 9 and July 23? Or how does the Board feel about meeting just on July 16 and have just one meeting in July? And that gives these folks three weeks to clear up any issues with their site plans, any additional calculations that we were talking about for stormwater on the property.
Well, why don't I ask my Board members how they feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
You're fine with July 16? Ms. Marie Ellen?
I'm okay with that.
Ms. Allen? Then we have our answer.
All right. So on the, so August, we've got two meetings scheduled. Because we're going to meet in the middle of the 16th, I'm not sure exactly how the August schedule lays out. Oftentimes, we're just having that one meeting in the middle of July. If we go with our regular schedule of August 13, we may have a month between meetings. So that may be fine. If someone files an A and R, you have 21 days to respond to an A and R, we may have to schedule a different meeting. But at this time, our meeting schedule for August is August 13 and the 27th. Just putting it out there that we might look at, and we'll have more of a discussion about that on our July 16 meeting, about whether we want to maintain our meeting schedule for the 13th and the 27th in August, or move that to an earlier August date, being the 6th, that's a week before.
Okay.
All right.
All right, then. We don't need to vote on that as long as we're all in agreement.
No, just chatting.
So we will go ahead with the July 16 at 7 o'clock, and it will be Meeting Room One.
Yes, sir.
All right, then. For our first public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 25, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One. On the application of Derek Varley requesting special permits pursuant to Sections 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver, Massachusetts, Assessor's Map 126-25-0-R, Lot Number One, Lot Number Two, Lot Number Three, and Lot Number Four in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District to construct a duplex on each lot. Any persons in. So do we have anybody here to speak of this? If you could, come up to the microphone, please speak up.
All right, if I may.
And I also need to ask if anybody in the room may not have had a chance to sign in, please do so, so we can pass that on to people taking notes.
Yes, please.
You should, please, yes.
Yes, and for our minute taker, when you speak, even if you introduce yourself before, just introduce yourself each time you come to the mic, because she's taking minutes remotely. So it makes it easy for her to go, this guy said that, this guy said that. So it's a little awkward to keep reintroducing yourself, but you'll feel like you're at a party, and you're just working the room.
Okay.
So for those folks watching at home, our agenda that's posted online has some hyperlinks in it. We talked about people making access to information that the Board is looking at. So on our, the agenda, the revised agenda, there are hyperlinks in the agenda. So if you're looking at this online, and you click on that blue link that says Lot One, it brings you to the plan set. at the bottom of the agenda, where it says all applications under review are posted on the Planning Board's webpage, if you click on that hyperlink, it takes you to the Planning Board's webpage where you will find the hearing notice, as well as other information regarding the application.
Thank you, Mr. Varley.
All righty, so for you folks, what I've done is, the plans that you have got, we got them on the TV screen here. So we've got this broken down into the four applications, but this, for references, is the A and R plan that notes where those lots are at for the folks who are here. So please, have a seat, make yourself comfortable.
All right, so I'm Derek Varley, here to apply for the special permit. And Scott Varley.
Derek's a vet.
We're both from, well, originally, I'm from Plimpton, been there. Just a little background, not from far away, I live in Plimpton, been there 36 years. Derek's married, he just moved to Plumton. So we are local people, and we just want to see if the Town of Carver will let us build the duplexes as we are requesting.
All right, so Lot One being the first one that fronts on Seapet Road.
Yep.
So that is. So we've got the plan set. In addition, when we get to that, we've also got the depiction of the facades, as well as the sketches that you put together.
Correct.
So I'll just bring us back to the plan.
Okay. So Lot One, we believe that we meet all the setbacks for the town. It's a 61,234 square foot lot located off of Seapet Road.
Excuse me, is Seapet Street, not Seapet Road?
Okay. Seapet Street. It's a four, it's going to be six bedrooms, three bedrooms on each side. The total square footage of the complete unit with the garage is 4,376 square feet. So it's 1,700 square feet per side. The lot is heavily vegetated, lots of trees would be cleared, the pine trees that could be affected of proposed structure and the neighboring structure would be removed. At the direction of the border vegetation buffer could be added. The lot clearing would include areas for the septic system and the well. Septic system design site plan would ensure any and all site runoff would be directed to the southern portion of the lot. The proposed structure location will meet all town requirement setbacks.
So there's the lot, and the elevation of the house. So these have garages in the middle?
They have garages in the middle, yes.
I think I'd like to open this up to the public first, so that the Board members can take in what they've got to say before we ask our questions. So just wait here, we can all be good neighbors and get an idea of what we need to do to see if we can go forward with this. So at this time, I'll take the first hand, and please come to the table, state your name.
Bill Cullen, can you hear us okay?
Yes, but it's probably a little bit of a delay.
Can you hear us okay, Bill?
Yes, but I can't see anything.
Oh. Well, you look great if you could see yourself. You're about eight foot tall on the screen.
I can see myself, and thank you.
And your video's on, obviously, on your screen.
Yeah, I don't think the camera's on over there at the Town Hall.
Just one in a series of tech mobile glitches tonight. All right, earwax.
Please.
Yes, Bruce Benson, I live at 9 Seapet Street, 47-year resident. That lot right there on, which is the eastern border, that's my property on the other side, so just a location on there. So these are individual permits granted per lot, or planning, with your considerations? Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Yes. Question I have for the builders is, are these condos, single ownership? How are these lots going to be managed?
They're putting these as duplexes?
Are they sold, rented?
Can I answer that?
Yeah, please.
We are, we plan on.
You have to come back and state your name.
Come up to the mic, have a seat, tell us who you are.
I don't know the proper way to go here, guys, so I just.
Scott Varley, one of the owners of the property, or soon-to-be owners. We plan on keeping all the duplexes and renting them.
That just raises a lot of questions for me, pride of ownership of these things, whatever, maintenance, future, et cetera, you know. I don't think that brings the pride of ownership to a small neighborhood like ours. That lot, as Mr. Varley said, is a heavily wooded lot, mature pine trees. It's going to take a lot of work to get that thing up to any type of buildable situation. And then, is there a timeframe on this, working hours, blah, 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 construction stuff? I'm an actual construction guy, so I kind of understand the scope of that. Seapet Street, if you're familiar with it, very narrow street. There's over 200 cars a day pass down that street, sometimes 300. I got them on my security cam right now, though. These are cars, semi trucks, whatever, lot of traffic. Five houses on that street, 200 cars plus. How are they going to manage the construction vehicles on this road? Police details? And the other thing about the duplexes, I just think it draws twice the resources out of that area, two times the wells, two times the sewage overflowing. That's Crane Brook right there, pretty nice watershed. I really think we can't stop progress, but certainly believing a single-family home in that neighborhood would be certainly better response to what we're talking about here. Owner, occupied home. Should we assume these future meetings, the 16th, come down here, or would be notified in the future as to which processes?
Can you answer that for him, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, so when the Board continues the meeting to a date certain, July 16 in this case, you won't get another invitation, you get one mailing that tells you when the meeting starts, and then you come back knowing that the meeting's.
They should be concerned to come.
Pardon?
Would I be allowed to speak?
Sure.
Gather the information as to how this is proceeding?
Yeah, it's up to the Chair, it's a public hearing, public gets to speak after the Chair recognizes it.
So according to your Board website, find out what you guys are doing, right?
Yeah, so July 16 is likely when we're going to be meeting, because that's what we just talked about earlier.
I can see this pertinent to this particular. Okay, that's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
I had one thing.
If you want, you want to address something that he said?
I just want to address one thing that.
Come forward.
Okay, Scott Varley, again, just to let everyone know that my son will be living in one of these four duplexes. That is, you know, he will own one, and just wanted to let you know that he will be in the area. It's not something that we're just going to let go, or anything like that. That's it.
Do you have anybody else, please?
Hello, John McNeil, I reside and own 8 Seapet Street, which is directly across the street from the Lot One proposed plans. I did send an email last week, I don't know if any of you got a chance to review it, but a lot of the similar issues that Bruce brought up, I'm also in agreement with. Also, with the other three lots that are going to be accessed from Tremont Street, it's a very dangerous intersection. I feel like there are accidents there weekly. And with the proposed plan of eight units, realistically, that's going to be 16 additional vehicles garaged at this relatively small location, at an already very dangerous intersection. I think that, to me, it would fit the criteria of an increased unsafe amount of traffic that would grant denial of this type of special permit. Again, it's a heavily vegetated area, and I'm concerned with the wildlife disruption, primarily from a public safety standpoint, because when this wildlife inevitably gets displaced with the increased traffic, I'm worried about, you know, deer strikes, coyote strikes, turkey strikes, so potential damage to.
We have enough turkeys.
Yeah, I know we do, but I just don't want anybody totally in their car.
I do appreciate the fact that wildlife is a concern.
Yeah, and I am also concerned about the draw on the water table. Myself, and I know many of my neighbors, at least on Seapet Street, we don't have very deep wells, I think they're only 30 feet deep. And we've been able to get away with that, because the Crane Brook watershed is directly across the street from us, so the water table does sit at a relatively safe high level. But we're talking about drilling eight additional wells, and on top of that, we're talking about installing eight additional septics. Concerned if any sort of affluent leeches out right into the Crane Brook watershed area, that I don't think that'll be good news for anybody. You know, the residents of the proposed new buildings and the existing residents. And just a little bit of history myself, like, we've been living in Carver for the last three years, but I'm a Plymouth native, so I've always been, I'm from the area, you know, next town over, so. And this was our first home that we ever bought, and a big part of the reason we bought it is because we did our research and knew that the Crane Brook Conservation Area was directly across the street. The lot behind us is owned by the Church of the Vine, so we know they're not going to be doing much building on there. So with, you know, we do have public safety concerns with these proposed lots, but also, we also would like to mention that building these lots would noticeably negatively impact our quality of life.
Seapet's one way, I believe.
It is one way, yes. And a lot of people use it as a cut-through to get down onto Wareham Street. Last week, somebody sideswiped a tree in front of my house, I had to call the police station to, you know, inform them that, you know, just to be a good citizen and report that there's still speeding going on down here, I know you're stretched thin for police detail and monitoring and all that, but just, it's, it's already a pretty dangerous area. We don't have children, if we did, I would not let them play in the front yard, as is right now. So, all that being said, that's my two cents as well. Do you have any questions?
I appreciate your two cents, I just want to make sure what your, probably your three biggest concerns are. So we're looking at, for the most part, traffic.
Yeah.
Concerned are traffic, clear cutting, and I believe, Mr. Benson, you were the same.
I think the rental's concerning me a lot.
Yes.
Right, ownership in those future homes.
Rental to own.
I can lie to you.
Sorry, that was my fault, I was just referring to you having the same concern. Okay, so.
So yeah, increased traffic, wildlife displacement and disruption, and what kind of draw the additional eight wells are going to have on the water table. I don't know what kind of prior research has been done about these proposed plans, what kind of draw it's anticipated to do, because I'm thinking like 10 years down the road from now, if we even have more severe drought conditions, what kind of an impact is that going to have by having increased properties just drawing up water from the water table? And I guess a fourth concern is, you know, I learned this tonight, you know, the rental properties, you know, it's all a resident-owned and dwelled area, pride of ownership kind of thing. I mean, I'm all for affordable housing, and I hate to be a NIMBY, not in my backyard, but this proposed plan would, we do not approve of it, just because of all these reasons.
We are here so that we can hear your concerns, that's the only way that we can make our decisions.
Okay.
You know, based on your concerns, and that's why I want to make sure that I got them, as well as to get them in our minutes, so that it would be ledged.
Okay, very good, thank you. And I'm, you know, sorry, Emily, I'm speaking on behalf of my wife as well. You have some questions? All right, so.
Please come forward.
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of the gentleman's email?
I am going to give him my card and ask him to send it again to my email address.
Okay, yeah, I sent it to the general Town Planner email address, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question, Connie. Please.
Hello, my name's Emily McNeil, I'm John's wife, and I reside at 8 Seapet Street also. I also am going to oppose the plans for the special permits, based off of similar reasons to my husband, the wildlife disruption. I mean, there's been developments that I know about in Plymouth, where when those kinds of clearings are happening, rats are swarming into the neighborhoods, and that's a genuine concern, as well as the other wildlife that, you know, we want to be able to take care of. We have coyotes, deer, turkeys, all running around in our yard as it is, they're often coming from that direction, that's the woods where they want to be, and they go to the woods at the back of our property. We also have, as John said, a shallower well, and I'm also concerned about how that would be affected with so much draw coming from the brook there, and whatever kind of other wildlife would be affected by anything kind of happening to the brook. I was at home the other day when that car went into the tree outside our house, and there are a lot of people who do fly down that road, even though it's one-way. We also have people who drive the wrong way up it, even though it's one-way. The lady who hit the tree, I'm assuming that she wasn't looking where she was going, because she said she flies down that street every day for 17 years. So between that, and the emergency services also use it as a cut-through to access different parts of the town, and, you know, when they've got their lights on, they're flying down there too. So there is already a lot of traffic, and any additional traffic to that area would be a huge concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Miller, I live at 6 Seapet Street, which is right next to them and across the street. One of the things that I brought up, talking about the wells, is I've been there for over 25 years now. Back in the early 2000s, the wells did go dry. We had a couple really dry summer, and there was a lot of shallow wells in Carver that had gone dry. Fortunately, mine never did, but the water had, I mean, dropped way down, and I mean, it hasn't happened since, but it is an occurrence. So there's already quite, I mean, the water table is high, but there's already quite drastic draw on the water as it passes down, and then down into Crane Brook. So that's something. Now, are they going to cut down all the trees? It said pretty much clear cut, or what is the actual?
I'm going to let Mr. Varley explain that to you.
Well, actually, we have.
We haven't, we haven't, right, we have to ask.
It hasn't really come up yet, right? So we.
No, no, we'll ask that question.
So is there going to be a riparian zone back to the brook? Is that going to be of trees? Is it just going to be bushes? Are they going to leave some of the trees? Are they going to leave any trees on the sides? Or is it just going to be, I mean, that's going to be a big vacuum on our little street. I mean, everybody's got trees, everybody's got stuff, and if they clear that out, like they do, like if you go down to Wareham, down by the Cumberland Farms across the soccer fields, it's the same thing, they just, they clear out, and it just ruins the whole aesthetic of everything. I'm not against a nice, single-family house, great, nice family across the street, they own the place, but to plop that many houses right in that little neighborhood is just a little excessive. What is it going to do with the traffic? As the folks had said, we already have a lot of traffic, we have a ton of people coming up the wrong way, we got Deer Hill Lane, we got Pine Tree Lane, then you put in Copper Lantern, so everybody cuts through there. And some people speed, some don't, but is there ever, is this going to turn into a two-way street? With the extra load from, I mean, what is the load on that street where they would have to change it? I mean, because it is a convenient cutoff, I mean, I could see it happening sometime, is this going to contribute to that? We don't want a two-way street, it's already dangerous enough, there's all folks and kids and dogs, everybody has, it's all folks and kids and dogs all up and down the street, so, you know, and people flying. Another thing, just at night, that driveway ain't right in his, his living room. Boom, so, I mean, just, it is what it is, but, you know, because headlights shining in his house every night. So my big things were the one to two-way wells, and about the riparian zones and the trees. And then one other thing, now, this is zoned agricultural right now?
Residential agricultural.
Now, what does that mean, residential? And now, does it get a tax break because it's agricultural? Or it's agricultural, but they can put a house on it?
All residential areas in the Town of Carver are residential agricultural due to the agricultural nature and the location of the bogs, and, right.
But it is actually, in a sense, zoned for houses.
It's, yes.
80% of the town, zoned the same way.
Right, right. Now, do you have to have, what is there, 150 feet frontage? I'm saying now, and that's just for a single-family home, right?
Yes, and they have met the requirements for frontage, yeah.
All right, so this 1, 2, 3, 4, right? Just one. So anyway, that's what I was wondering, if they get the exemption, and that's really all I got. So we have one-way, two-way, wells, and zoning. There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Mr. Varley, I was going to try to have you explain the tree situation to him, given that we have so many things that I want to go over to assure everybody.
Well, I guess we should ask Mr. Varley what their plans are for the lot.
And we're still not done, I just want to, I want to make sure that, you know, we're doing this the right way, whether we should answer the questions as we go, or to put them all together and then have a little bit of a powwow, so we can answer most of these to the best of our ability. So Tracy, why don't you come forward?
I guess, so you're going to do each lot individually?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So do you need to speak, or does anybody else want to come forward with concerns?
I will have an opportunity when they get to the number lot, correct?
We're going to.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to take each one at a time. If we don't have anybody else, then I think.
Yeah, you want to talk about what plans for developing the lot? Mr. Varley?
Scott Varley again. Okay, so I was supposed to have my site guy and my engineer here, but due to conflicting things, they couldn't make it. But we don't plan on clear-cutting anything. We just want to obviously fit the house on the lot, the driveway and the septic system. Obviously, we'd like to keep trees beside it, uh, just to have it look good. We don't want it to look terrible. We're not here to clear-cut it or make it look bad.
But, uh, excuse me, did you say that you have, I'm sorry.
That's our plan. We don't want anything to look aesthetically bad or anything like that. Try to keep as many trees as we can, but obviously, we have to clear what we need to clear to, to do the job.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Bruce Benson.
No, the gentleman next to you.
No, he's, he's got to come up. He's got to come up.
I know. I'm going to ask him, please, can I run the meeting?
I get it.
Thank you. Um, why don't you come forward? You had a question regarding their explanation of the trees.
So, so how much is the setback, or, or the side?
Uh, you got to ask that through me.
Hi, Chris Miller again. Um, how much is the setback on the sides from the house to the, to the property lines?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So thirty feet? So, uh, the, the minimum setback for a side yard is 30 feet. You see on the plan here, there's essentially 50 feet from the side of that building to the property line. So they're showing a 52, 49-foot setback on both sides.
So there's some room naked. I mean, I would just think, I, I thought you might have said it was 30 or 40 feet you were going to have cleared. Did I hear that wrong or something? Which is fine, that would still leave some stuff. I mean, because I know you don't want trees right next to the house. I mean, I get that.
The danger.
So, Mr. Miller, come back over here.
All right. You got a.
So the other thing I wanted to point out on the plan for folks who are looking at this is, uh, and I'm doing this largely because the Varley's engineering folks aren't here. Uh, so you see these lines on the side over here that say 79, 78, 79. So those are grading lines. So while they've got a 49-foot setback, these dash lines are what the existing topography is. So when they're working on the site, they'll be grading, uh, this side of the property. So where there's a grading line, you can assume that trees are coming down there because you can't grade with trees on the site. So no grading on, uh, the, the Benson's side, and, uh, some grading on the Randall's side.
Yes, Derek Varley again. So basically, what you're trying, what we're trying to do is get rid of any dangerous trees, trees that could hit a house, neighbor's house, some on our land that might fall. Not specif- well, this one's heavily vegetated, but specifically, I believe it's Lot Three, have some pine trees that are very tall. So you need to take a certain amount down, so that it's not disrupting. If it falls, you don't want it to hit the property. So we're going to try, like he said, to leave as much vegetation there to keep it aesthetically pleasing, but at the same time, you have to fit the house, you have to make it safe, and, uh, that's really it.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Benson. You want to come back up then, please?
Bruce Benson again. That lot from my property line all the way over to the other neighbor's home, which is over to the west, is very heavily populated. These are mature pine trees. Um, what happens when you go into an area like that and cut a big swath out of there? All those trees on the edges are exposed to more storm damage, wind damage, and potential coming down. And I'm also worried about how many trees are going to remain in the screening between my property and his, uh, lighting, et cetera. And I still oppose the rental, so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Emily McNeil again. I know that, um, you guys don't have everyone here who you wanted to be here, so perhaps they would be able to speak more to it. But I feel some of this is a little wishy-washy, and, you know, like, we're going to cut down some trees, not all trees. Is there a way we could get, like, a percentage of how much vegetation is going to be lost? And just some more specifics, um, about what exactly the plans are for it?
We are going to get to that. I'm going to take in all of the questions. At some point, I'm going to have Mr., our planner, Mr. Vought, explain what exactly the criteria is for, you know, the lots being cleared and how much they are allowed to clear.
Okay.
Uh, that way they're, they know what they have to do, and they'll be held accountable to, you know, adhering to that.
Okay, great, yeah, because, um, as mentioned, we're directly across the street from it, and those really tall, old pine trees provide a little bit of shade from the, from the afternoon sun onto our house, that if, if all of it was gone, it would definitely impact the structure of our house, the siding on our house, and the heat inside our house. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, then, if there are no more questions, I want to bring this to my board to see what their concerns are and what we can discuss regarding this. Mr. Shear.
Gentlemen, if you, if you would, have you received copies of the conservation letter and the fire department letter?
I received a, uh, do I have to keep that?
Derek Varley, uh, I just received an email this afternoon, uh, from, I think it
was, you in the fire department with an attachment. Um, so I did receive an email. I looked it over quickly.
I just want to make sure you got them, because we got them.
I didn't, I don't remember seeing anything from conservation.
But that's okay. Uh, they, they're, in, in regards to this lot, their concerns are minimal but important. There's no plans on any work being done inside the 200-foot river front zone?
I don't, not on this lot.
The, out of riparian zone? Any work to be done in that area must go?
I don't believe so.
Okay, any work, clearing of trees or anything in regards to that, must go through Conservation Commission for, uh, a variance in regards to that.
Yeah.
Can we, I don't see the front building lines or the distance from the, oh, okay, I see, it's 73 feet, so that's, that's well, 60 feet is our requirement, so that's well within there. Um, I have two different architectural drawings. Which one are we supposed to go by? They're a little, they're a little different. One, one shows a, is this one or?
That's a different lot, the one.
So what's on the screen right now?
Yes.
Shows Lot One, and this sort of color depiction, uh, is, so that's Lot One. Is that in the top right corner, say Lot One, Connie?
This one says Lot One, yes. I, but this one didn't say any, any lot on it, so it kind of. Oh, yep, Lot Three. Two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Vought.
No, I have, I have a copy here. That's why I was asking questions, because I didn't see that the other one was notated Lot Three on it. Um, is there plans to bring that garage up to second story on those? Okay. I think those were, uh, those were really all my questions. Uh, the fire department wants a 22-foot wide minimum driveway. Um, and we're supposed to minimize the number of, uh, remove six-inch caliber trees, and they should be noted on here in regards, or at least a 10-inch tree should be noted on here. I understand you get to clear a lot of the lot. We understand that, but we're supposed to minimize it and, and help address some of the concerns of, of our neighbors. I think, uh, those were really all the questions I had.
Mr. Della, do you have any questions at this time?
I'm just wondering why, um, rental instead of owning these homes.
Well, honestly, we just, we wanted to use it basically for our time, and we're planning on keeping it, not selling it. Um, I have done this in other towns and haven't had any problems or any issues. We hire people to mow the lawn, wash the house, keep up with it, we own it. I think it would be a great neighbor to whoever is there, because if there's anything they ever wanted us to do, it's not a problem for us to take care of it. Down the street, 10 miles away, my son will be living there, so.
So if I may, so one of the things, uh, that zoning doesn't provide is ownership. You zone for a type of a house, single-family, duplex, multifamily. You don't zone for ownership. You don't zone for rental. You don't zone for homeownership. That's not part of what zoning is. So the applicant has the ability to build these things and sell them or rent them however they like. Ownership is not part of zoning.
But we can limit the ability to split the lot in two, correct?
A special permit, uh, for, is what is required for, uh, a, uh, a duplex. Uh, and the board can impose reasonable conditions.
Which would be single ownership in order to prevent any future division of land?
Uh, the board could likely condition something that says we deny the special permit for a duplex.
But we can't deny the future splitting of the land?
I don't know how you split a piece of land that's already minimum lot size. It's 150-foot of frontage. It's the right amount of acreage back of it is.
I, I get that.
There, there is not splitable.
That's, that's why I'm asking questions.
Next one.
Mary Ellen, I'm going to ask you if you have questions.
I'm just curious. I wasn't here for the first meeting, of which you attended, but when you came forth to ask for the A and R plan, was this your intent to build these duplexes, to rent? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay. I don't support this. I don't think it's good for the neighbors. I don't think it's good for the neighborhood. You're on a one-way street. I live in South Carver. I see all the traffic. I know what Mr. Benson is talking about, because when I was a teenager, he used to yell at me. So. So, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, and I think this is, this is overbearing, this type of project.
I also have a concern.
Can I ask a question?
Just, just a minute, please. I also have a concern with the existing building. What's to become of that?
There is no existing building on that.
Not on Lot One, it's.
Oh, that, right, we're on Lot One, okay, so we'll get to that. If you have a question, could I have her come, have opportunity to come forward? You need to come up and state your name.
I was wondering why the gentlemen.
Would you please introduce yourself?
We need to get your name, please.
Would you introduce yourself, tell us your name?
I'm sorry, Patricia Benson. I live at Nine Seepet Street also, and we've lived there for, I don't know, 45 years, I guess. Um, I'm just wondering why the gentlemen are proposing four houses instead of just building one house that would be much more appropriate for our street and for the lot.
Okay.
That's all.
Would you care to answer that?
Scott Varley again. Um, I thought we were talking about Lot One, but.
We are talking, she's, she's tying that in.
So there's one, there's one building, but two units on Lot One. There are four lots with four duplexes proposed.
So I believe her question was a house opposed to a single duplex, not the, a single house opposed to a duplex. I think that was why she came up to ask that question.
Well, if that was her question, it was, it was pretty much rental income for retirement. They said, I'm going to own it, my son's going to own one, don't plan on selling it, so that's the reason.
Did you hear that, Ms. Benson? Please.
Hi, Tracy Alberti, 286 Tremont Street. I just have one question. If you intended to put up duplexes, why did you initially go for permits for single-family homes?
Would you like to answer that?
Derek Varley again. So as far as I know, we have not applied for any permits, building permits for any structures yet. So I don't know where you might be getting that info that we applied for single-family.
I'm sorry, my wording, my wording was incorrect. It was permits. If you came before the void a few months ago, and you were putting up four homes, now it's doubled to eight.
Tracy, can you please ask it through me?
A few months ago, they came before the void, and they wanted to put up four homes. Now it's changed to eight with four duplexes.
Um, if it's all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It, it wasn't for a permit to build a home, it was called what's, um, approval not required.
Not required in order to be able to put up four homes.
No, in, in order to show that the lot is buildable.
Buildable.
And, and now, because duplexes are allowed under special permit, they, they do have the right to ask for them. And, and they're trying to maximize their potential, and whether it fits in with the neighborhood and, and the town is, is what we are here to discuss. But that was just simply to provide, uh, to show that they had the frontage and the square foot, um, necessary to have what is called a buildable lot.
Okay.
Thank you for trying to answer that. And, uh, thank you, Tracy, for giving them, uh, the different questions so they could understand it, what they were looking for. I think we have a lot of concerns regarding this. And moving forward, Mr. Vought, I, um, I think probably would be a much better idea for them to have their, um, engineers here as well, to help them with many of these questions, because you have heard that there are an awful lot of concerns from the public. Um, and, uh, this is a very tight spot to put exactly, you know, what you're looking to put in here. And, uh, I think it would only be fair for you to have the opportunity to bring, you know, your engineer to help you with some of these questions and concerns, so that we can make a, a decent decision, you know, not against you, but in fairness, hearing all of the concerns that, uh, the public have had to bring forward. There's a lot going on in this little area.
I agree.
Um, and we're at the first one. We're going to be moving on, and there's going to be these same questions for the next three. So I just thought I would let you know that now, you know, going forward.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to go over this three more times, so I think at this point, we probably, do we continue to move to the next one, or do we have to?
Well, I think since they're individual, we're having a hearing on each of these, I think you continue each particular lot to a date certain.
Was it July 16th?
Uh, July 16th is the date that, that we're looking at. So if there's no other questions from the public, uh, it's perfectly appropriate to continue to the 16th.
Would you? Would you accept the motion?
No, I would.
I would make the motion to continue then the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit for 278 Tremont Street Lot Number 1 to July 16, 2024, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall.
We second that motion.
All right.
We have a motion and a second, so 16th, so we don't have, do we have any further discussion at this time?
This is special permit, so it has to go alphabetically.
Just on continuing it.
Just on continuing?
You, I think you got a motion to continue to the 16th and a second, so I think you're just looking for a vote to continue to the 16th at this point.
All right.
Yep, so it would be me.
We also have to add Bill to this.
Absolutely.
All right.
He's first up.
And you know what, Bill, I'm sorry, you were to the left of me. You are going to be part of this, so could you please add any input that you might have regarding this?
Anything we're gonna add, Mr. Chairman?
Could you say that again?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, so are you fine with continuing this at this time?
I'm more than fine.
Okay, thank you.
That was an aye vote, then.
So that's.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Okay.
Owen Sivilo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Okay, so we'll be back here on the 16th for Lot 1.
All right, so we will move on. Do I have to read?
I don't know that you have to read the hearing notice. I don't think you necessarily have to read the hearing notice for each one.
Okay, so. I'm sure we're gonna have the same exact questions for all three, for all four lots. I don't know if you would like us to save some time from going over them. If you duly noted all of the concerns going over the very first one, but.
I think we gotta talk about them all because they're all on the agenda. Yep.
Very well.
So next up, the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit, 278 Tremont Street, Accessory Map 126250, our Lot 2. Plans on the board.
Okay. So Lot 2 Tremont Street consists of 145,893 square foot parcel. It's a four-bedroom duplex, 1,300 square feet per side, so roughly about 2,600 square foot. Portion of the lot will be previously developed and existing accessory building to remain. Proposed four-bedroom duplex with total of, like I already said, total building with the garage is 3,500 square feet. Vegetation tree line will remain so that the proposed structure will be partially obscured from Tremont Street and the neighboring property. The location of the structure was to allow no impact to the neighborhood or character. The existing structure, which is the garage that's there in the back, is to remain. The access driveway parking area and backup areas will be paved. All impervious surfaces will meet Carver's stormwater regulations. The proposed structure will meet all required setbacks.
All right, so can I talk a little about stormwater in relation to the lots on Tremont Street?
I would appreciate that.
So the town of Carver recently updated its stormwater regulations and the properties that are on Tremont Street that all front near catch basins, they all have the potential to contribute to the Mass, to the Carver stormwater system. So in each of those cases, if you're clearing more than one acre of the lot, you'll be required to go through the stormwater process as well, to look at the mitigation for those sort of things. So inform your engineer, they've got that information as well. So one of the things that we'll be asking for all the lots on Tremont Street is what is the amount of area to be disturbed?
Okay.
If you're disturbing under an acre, then you're likely not going to be subject to the land disturbance permit under our stormwater regulations. If you're clearing more than an acre, then you will. But that will require your engineer to do that math for us and bring that information to the board.
Great, all right, thank you.
All set? And we'll go through asking the public again to come forward, state your name, come forward and your concerns.
Hello, John McNeil, 8 Seepeth Street again. In addition to all of my previous concerns that I mentioned about Lot 1, for this particular lot, I noticed that they are going to be leaving a garage building intact. I would like to know what the use of that building is gonna be because the applicant appears to be wanting to retain ownership of the entire property and my assumption is you're building developers and if they're going to be storing and housing construction equipment on a rental property for residential use, I'm just not sure if that is something that is like appropriate or legal. If asked, like, let me know if that's, if I'm, you know, totally wrong about that, but, you know, so if they're gonna keep the existing structure and they're gonna be storing construction equipment, they're gonna be moving it in and out to all their job sites, you know, locally and elsewhere. And if these are gonna be eight units, I'm assuming with the sizes of them, there're gonna be families, if they're children. When I was a kid, I was always running around in the woods playing and if there's gonna be frequent construction equipment being moved in and out just in a residential area, that is a public safety concern for me. And this is really not based off of anything, so I might be totally wrong, but I just wanted to put my hand up and raise that concern. So with that being said, thank you.
All right, duly noted. Mr. Varley, would you or your son like to maybe?
Yes, Scott Valley again. Right now, we have no plans to do anything with it. It's there. Probably just gonna maybe keep my motorhome there, maybe a motorcycle, nothing. Don't plan on renting it out to anybody or trying to make money off of it, it's just a structure that's there and we just wanted to keep it, probably just for storage, storage for stuff. I don't have a big contracting business. I'm an electrical contractor by trade, so really, I wouldn't be using it for anything like that. So just have the building leave, I didn't, just didn't wanna tear it down.
Could you tell us how big it is, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I don't know how big it is. It's pretty good sized, I mean, I'm guessing 50 by 80 would be a guess, but I don't know that.
That's it. That's about the size.
I think he probably has seen it, he knows how big it is.
Mr. Benson, please come. State your name, speak into the mic, please.
Bruce Benson again. Regarding those outbuildings and RA lots being used for business purposes, stuff like that, I have firsthand experience with this with a neighbor down there, with a, a budding neighbor, one of the guys at Cranberry and all that, they have a large commercial business running out of there, not permitted by the town, denied on the ZBA. But anyways, I've seen the abuse with this.
Okay.
So I'd leave it as a consideration.
Okay.
Emily McNeil, resident of 8 Seepeth Street. So mentioning that the usage of the garage just for personal use for a motorhome or a motorcycle or whatever, is this, and I'm not sure if I'm even allowed to ask this, but is this the lot that you're intending on living on? And if so, what kind of longevity do you see of being a resident of whichever lot it is that you choose? Is it like a temporary thing while, you know, you're getting people in the door or do you plan on living there for the rest of your life? Thank you.
All right, well, where we have four lots in question, I'm gonna ask them to tell you which lot that they plan.
Thank you.
If you'd be kind enough to share with us, given, give us the most information that we can get, you know, as far as which one would you, I think, be residing in?
Okay, first of all, he wouldn't be living there, it's my other son.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
So he's my youngest son and he's probably gonna be living in Lot 4.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one we plan on it.
Okay, so Lot 4 is not Lot 2. All set? Do we have any other questions in the audience? Mr. Shea. I think we'll go to us and.
Sure.
Open it up to you, please.
The conservation agent has concerns that in regards to the location of the 200-foot riverfront zone or auto repairian zone, which are under conservation jurisdiction and would require a permit for any work done within it, including removal of trees. It's very tight in there and they're gonna want erosion controls required along the work limit, which would be outside of this zone, and I wanna make sure that you can fit those in should this be approved. If, because I see the grading goes up quite considerably at this point, so. They're gonna want erosion controls and prevention of stormwater runoff and during construction from entering that area, and it looks like the grading goes right up to the edge of it and I wanna make sure that you guys will be able to fit in the appropriate controls necessary. It's not really a question, it's just that should this go forward, that's gonna be part of what's required and recommended. Other than that, again, I'd like to know the size of the garage and was it an agricultural use prior to this? Clearly, it wasn't residential if it was within the 65-foot buffer zone.
It was agricultural, Connie.
Pardon?
It was agricultural.
Right, it would have to be if it was, if it was within the 65-foot buffer zone, so that's, that's gonna be a concern that remains. Doesn't become a garage for mechanics or whatever the odd case may be. That's all I have for questions. And it's nice to see that you put the limit of tree clearing on here, and I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm gonna go to you, Mary Ellen.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, no questions on 2? And you don't have any questions?
I got, I got one last question for you gentlemen. So I'm back to the pictures again. Now, both of these say Lot 2.
Oh, sorry, let me get the pictures up.
This one's showing a roof line that continues straight across and this one's showing an underdeveloped roof line, so which one are we looking at?
That one's not to scale, that one's more probably a closer.
Okay, so go to this, this was just a rough idea.
Just so I understand, black and white or color?
Black and white is the plan, this is more of an idea.
All right.
Thank you, that was all.
You guys are all set?
Yes.
Right, okay. So, again, I think this is a good opportunity for us to get all our questions for you and then for you to take this and be able to have your engineer with you. And so I think I'm gonna do the same thing and ask for motion to continue this.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Derek.
Oh, wait.
Okay, yep.
I gotta apologize, I am.
Fair enough.
Bill, I am so terribly sorry, I did it again. I'm sorry. If, now, if you had that beautiful beard, I probably would see that out of the corner of my eye. Please, do you have anything to add?
I'm working on, I'm working on the beard, but no, I'm ready to move on this one as well.
Okay, thank you. Then.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver, Lot 2, requesting construction of a duplex to July 16, 2024, Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 PM.
And Ellen seconded.
Frog.
All right.
Bill Carroll votes aye.
Mr. Shea votes aye.
Owen Sivilo votes aye.
Mary Ellen Williams votes aye.
And Kevin Robinson votes aye.
So if I may assist, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I have so many papers in front of me tonight.
So next, we have on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit for a duplex located at 278 Tremont Street, Accessory Map 126250R, in the residential agricultural zone to construct a duplex. And plan is on the screen here as well.
All right, are we good?
We are, if you would like to explain that.
Okay, so where are we at, Lot 2 or Lot 3?
3. We're on 3.
Okay, Lot 3, okay, Lot 3. Basically, it's the same design, same house as Lot 2. Lot 3 consists of 64,343 square feet. Four-bedroom duplex, total square footage, 3,500 square feet. The lot has a vegetation tree line on the northern portion of the separation of Lots 2 and 3. Portion of that tree line would be removed, as much as possible of the tree line will remain. Lot on the southerly side has a tree line to be used for screening. Portions of the existing driveway to be removed. Existing curb cut on Tremont Street is to remain. The access driveway parking area and backup area will be paved. The existing structure that is on that lot will be removed. Proposed structure would be 115 feet off Tremont Street, off Tremont Street, and all other setbacks would be met. Septic system design and plan would ensure that all site runoff would be contained on the site. All impervious surfaces will remain, will meet Carver's stormwater regulations.
At this time, do we have any additional concerns that we haven't already heard regarding this particular lot? Mr. Benson's coming in, then I'll, then I'll have you.
Hi, Bruce Benson. Are those tight tanks on that lot or are those septic fields?
Mr. Valley, would you like to speak it out or would you like to take that as a consent?
Introduce yourself, sorry.
Hi, this is Scott Valley. That design has actually not been done yet, but those will be septic, that's gonna be a septic field, not a tight.
There are tanks there, okay, okay, I couldn't see it. Yeah, I see, yeah, I got it, yeah, I got it, yeah, okay.
Okay, please come forward.
Emily McNeil, I think I already know the answer to this, but I just wanted to double check. Is there just gonna be one entranceway for all three of the lots off of Tremont Street or are there gonna be three separate driveways coming off that street?
There's three separate driveways listed for each, every lot has its own driveway.
So each lot is gonna access Tremont Street at a separate point?
For the lots on Tremont Street, the one on Seepeth Street is of course gonna.
Yeah.
Would you be too much trouble to bring that up so she can just see it?
So those are the original lots. So each lot, Two, Three, and Four, all get an individual driveway. And so we see on the plan set here, this is Lot Three. So there's the driveway. It goes out here where the existing driveway starts at. So right now, this existing curb cut comes in here, and this is the pavement that I think takes you to the garage in the back. So that driveway will be in the same space. There won't be an additional curb cut there.
Okay, thank you. Again, with the concerns for Lot One, I would still be concerned with how that would affect traffic and, you know, that intersection being so dangerous there. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yes, Chris.
Chris Miller, please.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I have the same concerns for Lot Three as I.
Introduce yourself, please.
Chris Miller.
Thank you.
Anyways.
Address?
Six, Seppit Street, around the corner there. But, oh, now I'm drawing a blank. Oh, yeah, no, I just have the same concerns and I'm doing to make sure that I'm voicing the same concerns for each lot with the riparian zones, with the wells, the water, the water usage, the water drainage, definitely, just stuff like that. I just want to make sure that I'm not just worried about Lot One because it's across the street. You know, I just want to make sure the whole area is.
Thank you. Now, is that.
And if I may, so the conservation agent has commented on the duplexes of the four lots that Lot Three and Lot Four would likely require review and approval by the Conservation Commission for construction within the 200-foot out of riparian zone. And Connie made reference to this earlier. The construction and grading on Lots One and Two appear to be outside of the conservation's jurisdiction. However, erosion controls should be required along the work limit to prevent erosion from construction towards resource areas. And any further alteration of the riverfront areas, buffer zones, or flood zones, including clearing of vegetation above and beyond what's shown on the plans, would also need to be reviewed by the conservation agent.
Thank you for that information. Do we have any additional concerns that we want to bring forward to these gentlemen? Please.
Thank you, John McNeil, eight Seppit Street. I just thought of this after looking at all the septic plans and it becoming knowledge now that these are going to be rental properties. I am a former renter, and I have lived in multifamily housing. And my main concern is renters not doing their due diligence in terms of the proper care that comes with having a septic system versus town sewer. There have been many incidents where my downstairs neighbors would be flushing baby wipes that would flood the basement. And I'm concerned that if it's renters rather than homeowners, there's a potential that they could have a very negative impact on the septic sooner rather than later over several years. And if there's an issue where they're dumping waste that doesn't break down naturally in a septic system as, you know, they're intended to design and be used, what's going to happen if the leaching field is toasted because of improper use and improper care? And I know, like, you know, you sound like you're going to be diligent property managers, but you can't be in, but you can't be in your rental, your rental properties keeping your tenants under a microscope, ensuring that they're going to be doing their due diligence. It's more of a, it's always going to be reactive instead of proactive. And so I'm concerned if there's going to be additional construction on the leaching fields or the septic because of, you know, let's call it ignorance on rental tenants not, you know, doing their due diligence to ensure, like, I am, food scraps don't go down my sink because we have a septic. And I know, you know, how difficult it can be to, you know, do any sort of remediation work if needed because of improper care. So that is a concern I would like to raise with these being rental properties that will have septic systems. Thank you.
We will add that to the list of concerns. Thank you. We all set in the audience? Mr. Shea.
My biggest concern is going to be that almost the entirety of this project is inside of the 200-foot riverfront protected zone. I know Andy Glynn sent some, let's, references to the properties, but I didn't have it in my packet. So but I'm sure he mentioned he'll have an updated one or a more formal one that we can provide to.
Yeah, correct. So the question that I posed to both our Department of Public Works, called Operation Ameans here, is do, are the catch basins on Tremont Street the town's or somebody else's? So they're the town's. And if you disturb more than an acre of land, then you're subject to the stormwater regulations as well. Now, we always look at these things to make sure we're not flooding out the property on the side of things. But if they're netting more than an acre of disturbed area, then that's the calculation we're going to ask them for. In the case of this lot where there's a roadway that goes across it, you know, there's already some area that is disturbed. So we'll ask their engineer to bring us the calculation of what's the net effect of the area to be disturbed from redeveloping this site. The other thing that I wanted to point out that we, you know, I talked about a little earlier, that existing building to be raised on the front of the property, according to the assessor's maps, and the assessors are strictly for valuing property, but under the town's demolition delay by law, if a structure is over 100 years old, it has to go to the Historic Commission for a demolition permit. Has to be reviewed by the Historic Commission. So in addition to the list of things you'll be working on, you'll likely be making an application to the Historic Commission as well to demolish that building.
All right. So, Mr. Shea, your concerns?
That was it. That's really my concern is that the buildable portion of the lot is, I mean, the entirety of the project, including septics, is all within the 200-foot riverfront zone. But that was really my concern.
Ms. Mary Ellen.
I support Connie's concerns because that whole area of the property, Three, and we'll get to Four, it's very wet. There's a lot of areas of concern there, and putting these duplexes in there, I don't think it's right, you know. But do we have the right to comment on that? Or does that go to the conservation?
They would be required to get a variance to the conservation for any work, so removal trees, clearing of land, anything within the 200-foot zone.
If it's on your mind, say it.
No, I just.
Not that we permit those things, but this.
I did not know if that was our area to comment on in that respect, if they have to go to the Concom first to determine whether or not it's buildable the way it's laid out.
Yeah. So the memo that we got, or the email we got from the conservation agent said specifically that Lots Three and Lot Four would require Conservation Commission review and approval.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And Mr. Dillow.
Did we discuss the page from the fire department? And was discussing the width of the driveways?
Connie brought that up earlier. Does that change their footage?
Well, once again, the onus is on them. The fire department has said driveways have to be 24-foot wide, so they're going to be amending the plans for all of these. So while Webby Engineering is doing the work on this.
You have that note then? I don't, I thought I'd see a lot more writing coming from the two of you guys.
We just got that today. We didn't know anything about it from the fire department. We just got that email four o'clock today. So it's kind of last minute for us. We didn't know anything about it.
All right. And.
Joe was talking, yes, and Joe's got it. Our engineer has that email also.
All right. That's why I think the right thing is for you to be able to have your representation of the engineer here for those difficult questions, you know, you might not have answers to.
Okay.
And Mr. Bott, you stole my thunder. My question was going to be about the raised building and the historical aspect of it. So you did get that note as well to look into that. And Mr. Dillow, you had a second question, I believe?
No, I was just looking, you know, at the width of the driveways.
So, yes.
It was just on that page from the fire department.
All right, well, thank you. And Mr. Cullum, I'm not going to miss you this time.
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions.
All right. This was your big chance.
Opening night.
Our planner made a big deal of this, you know. But we would have you, so we need the best that you've got. So at this time.
Understood, but it's a very experienced board that's asking a lot of really good questions.
Very well answered.
He's really good, isn't he?
I know. He might have to bring him on full time. So I'm going to do, again, ask for somebody to make a motion for continuing this.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit located at 278 Tremont Street, Lot Number Three, to construct a duplex to July 16, 2024, Meeting Room One, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 p.m.
I second that motion.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Cullum.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Mr. Shea, aye.
Ellen Gillis says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Mr. Bott, if you'd be so kind enough to take the last one.
So next up, we have on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for a property located at 278 Tremont Street in Carver, Mass., Assessor's Map 126250R, Lot Four, in the residential agricultural zoning district to construct a duplex. And that is Lot Four on the screen.
Okay, Scott Varley again. Lot Four consists of 141,559 square feet. Four-bedroom duplex, 2,400 square feet, 1,200 square feet per side. The existing dwelling is to be raised. The existing garage is to remain. Portions of the existing driveway to remain to the structure. Existing curb cut to be utilized for access. The proposed structure meets all town setback requirements. The septic design and plan would ensure that all site runoff would be contained on the site, all impervious, such as roof drains and driveways, will meet Carver stormwater regulations.
So at this time, if anybody can bring anything else that they want to add to this, Mr. Varley can take this information. Please, Tracy.
Tracy Alberti, 286 Tremont Street. I don't have anything to add. I just want to reiterate the well situation that it can cause and also to make sure that the wetlands are definitely recognized on this property. Crane Brook runs right between that property and our property.
That will be noted and heard.
Yes. So I just wanted to talk a bit about if there's no other questions from the public or the board.
Hello again, John McNeil, eight Seppit Street. My concern with the raising of the existing structure, it's obviously a pre-1978 building, so I do have, I am a former project manager for exterior painting, so this is something I'm quite familiar with. I'm concerned with the demolition of the building because it's pre-78, any type of lead contamination in the siding or the paint, you know, just how the home was built. And I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I drive past the home, I believe it does have asbestos siding. But I might be wrong. I would have to confirm that. But I just do have concerns with the actual demolition and it being done safely and in a manner that any debris is within an acceptable range for not contaminating the environment or the water table or any, you know, just, it's not going to contaminate the area. That's it. So I would like to just voice that concern that, you know, the demolition is done in accordance with, you know, OSHA, you know, renovation, repair, and painting, EPA, all that kind of stuff. Lead paint was always a thorn in my side as a project manager, so I know it's quite a hurdle to overcome from a development standpoint. So I just want to raise my concern for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bott, is that exactly why you explained earlier that that is why it would go through the Historical Society?
Well, so anybody who wants a demolition permit has to get one from the building commissioner. And so the building commissioner is going to look at the demolition permit and decide if he's going to give it in those conditions for that, largely based on the things that Mr. McNeil said. So regarding the historic structures, if it's over 100 years old, under the town's demolition delay by law, it has to go to the Historic Commission to determine the applicability for, and Connie can give me the verbiage since he's on the Historic Commission.
The historical nature or aspect in regards to the town, that's what we look at. Not, that's, the building inspector would make that determination.
He's going to make the conditions for, the Historic Commission might say, we believe this is historic for whatever reason, and we're going to give you a six-month delay to figure out if you can move it, if you can save it, if you can do something else with it, if it has, you know, historical significance.
Okay.
So it's a two-step process for demolitions on these properties.
To explain to Mr. McNeil, I just want to make sure that he heard that it's two, two steps. We're not going to just overlook that. All right. But, and this is exactly why we have this, so that everybody's concerns can be brought forward and so that they can get the answers that they need to hear, and we can address them.
All right. So if I can talk a bit about the permits themselves?
Now, please.
So with special permits, it gives the board, you know, latitude in imposing conditions, things such as hours of construction, things such as what do you get to use that existing garage or barn for? So there are conditions that the board can impose as a, for a special permit. And duplexes are essentially looked at the same way under the Building Code as single-family homes, from the building commissioner's perspective, from the Building Code perspective. From the role of the planning board, you know, special permits are granted based on a determination by the board that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts to the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relationship to that site. In addition, any criteria set forth in the bylaw, the determination will include the following. What is the social, economic, or community needs that are served by the proposal? What about traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading? Adequacy of utilities and other public services? Neighborhood character and social structure? Impacts of the natural environment? And potential fiscal impacts, including the impact on town services, the tax base, and employment? So the question before the board for each of these special permits is to weigh the impact of what's being done and the benefit that comes with it. So it's a balancing act, and it's the determination of the board. So that's why we have special permits, to impose those conditions and to weigh those characteristics. So as we move forward, that, that'll be the discussion the board will be having.
Thank you. All right. I believe that was the last one.
If I may.
Oh, please.
Again, in case I didn't address it earlier, my main concern is going to be that this is within the 200-foot riverfront zone, protected zone. And also, were we to approve it, we would probably require the removal of much of the existing driveway, which was clearly used for agricultural purposes, parking agricultural trucks and materials in that area, and would no longer be required. But again, that would be at the discretion of the board. I'm just telling you what my opinion is in regards to that. Again, any work within the 200-foot zone, including cutting trees, clearing, or leveling the land, would require a permit through the Conservation Commission. the land, would require a permit through the Conservation Commission. And that's all I have.
All right. Then I am going to ask again, oh, I'm sorry, please.
By the way, Emily, you have been crushing it introducing yourself every time you come up. You are the role model, how people are paying attention.
Paid attention in school. Emily McNeil, 8 Seapet Street. I just have a couple of questions just about the timeline for construction. I was wondering how long each lot would take for construction of the duplexes, and if they are all going to be being constructed at the same time, or if it's going to be one after the other, and how drawn out of a process that would be. Thank you.
All right. Would you prefer that? Would you like to answer that now?
It depends upon, obviously, when we get the permits. My goal was to do two at once, approximately take six months, I'm guessing. It's usually about the amount of time it would take, but I can't guarantee that, especially, you know, not knowing what everyone else's schedule is like. But that is my goal.
Do we have anybody else? That's it? And I'm going to ask that we continue this one as well.
I thought you were going to ask Bill if he had any questions.
I was, I...
I knew you were just about to do that.
I did this time. I tried to remember to look to my left. So, at this time, I will ask again if we can, for somebody to...
I will make a motion if...
Make a motion to...
To continue the public hearing on the application of Derek Varley requesting a special permit located at 278 Tremont Street, Carver, Lot Four, to construct a duplex to July 16, 2024, Meeting Room One, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 P.M.
Second motion.
And I'll pick, I'll pick Ellen on that one for a second. All right. Bill?
Bill Cullum, aye.
Mr. Shea, aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All righty. And if I can just steal a moment with the crowd here?
Just do.
And I saw a couple of people taking a look at the board earlier. So, we are in the midst of doing a housing plan for the town of Carver, or Housing Production Plan. Part of that is a survey that we're doing. So, you can find the survey on the town's website. It talks about preferential types of houses for single-family, multifamily, and things like that. So, I saw Mr. McNeil kept in the QR code. But while I've got a captive audience and we're talking about housing and the need for it, please take a look at the survey, submit your responses. We appreciate that. Thank you much.
Do you see the survey from the town, or we have to go there?
You're going to go to the website.
Have to go there.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Back in the day, we used to mail things out, but people don't write things down anymore.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
All right, you guys, we got a little more business to, Mr. Benson, we got a little more business to conduct here, so if you guys want to chat, maybe down the hallway, downstairs. Great. Thank you much.
Mr. Bott, you have us signing the covenant for K&amp;G Development.
Yes, so, yes, if I may. At our last meeting, the board endorsed the plan, but I neglected to include the covenant. So, essentially, this is the board, the covenant. And what the covenant does is says that no lot can be sold in the development until released by the planning board. So, subdivision plan goes to the registries for court along with the covenant. The developer has to come back, have a pre-construction conference with us, with conservation, with building, with all the various regulating departments. And then they have to build a roadway, has to be inspected, we could assure you bond on it. And at that point, the developer can ask to release those lots. And what keeps them from selling any of them is the covenant. It says, you don't get to sell anything until the board says you can't. They can sell the whole development to somebody, but they can't put anything on any individual lot. So, that is the purpose of the covenant that we have. It goes hand in hand with the plan. So, I've got the covenant. If you folks would be kind enough to sign. If you would not be kind enough to sign, Mr. Chairman, just make sure our notary gets to see your signature. So, if I can pass that down?
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Mr. Bott, I'm not allowed to sign that, correct?
Yeah, you weren't here, right? Yeah. So, thank you very much.
Yeah.
The good news is you're going to get to sign everything pretty soon. So, you're not signing that, right? You passed that down?
You said not to sign.
I'm just making sure.
All right. I went to make sure, no, no. No, Ellen has it.
I took my hands off you for a second.
I didn't know if you were going to twist that into that meant yes.
All right. I know.
Tom, for the record, I'm a notary. If you want me to go grab my stamp to notarize this signature.
Thank you very much. We'll keep that in the file for later on if necessary. Just make sure I get it back after Ellen. Ellen, you signed it as well?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. So, we took care of that, and we need to, planning board, members. Do any members have notes? Anything?
When is Old Home Day?
July 27.
The last Saturday of the month, right?
So, a month from now. All right. Something for people to keep in mind.
And if I may, a great segue to the Housing Production Plan that we'll talk about in a little bit. So, part of the public input is talking to folks. So, we are likely going to have the folks from Serpide attending Old Home Day and talk about our Housing Production Plan and get some more information from people at Old Home Day. So, they're looking at scheduling that. We talked about it last year, but there was just not enough time from we jumpstarted this thing for them to get onto the ground. So, they're looking at coming to Old Home Day as well, and maybe Police Night Out, which I think is a week later, something like that.
All right. Player notes.
Thank you. I'm Tom Bott. I'm the town planner here in Carver, Mass., and I wanted to make sure you guys knew we're working on a Housing Production Plan, and there's a survey, and you can find it on our website. We will probably have some paper copies as well. We're looking at having some paper copies here for those people who don't do computers, and perhaps working with the council on aging as well, to use their computers for people who want to come in when they do their regular gigs at the, visiting the council and aging. So, part of the Housing Production Plan, this survey is about housing types that you like or you don't like. They look at the pictures, go, I like that, I don't like that. So, it's great, doesn't take much time. QR codes on the website. In addition, a regional plan that the folks at Serpide are doing is for pedestrians. So, there is a pedestrian survey as well. This one has been out there for a bit, and this survey closes on July 1. So, if the heat's oppressive in getting to you, you can stay home in the comfort of your house and take the pedestrian plan survey as well, also on the town's website. So, you can find both of those, scan the QR code, and do the survey if you like.
Under the planning board page or under the homepage?
I think it's probably on the homepage. Let's take a look. So, here at the top, we've got Housing Production Plan. At the bottom, we've got the Serpide Plan.
Fantastic.
So, right on the homepage. All right. So, the last thing I wanted to talk about is Community Solar. So, I was approached by a company earlier this week, and they said, hey, would you talk about our Community Solar project? And I went, well, no, because we don't talk about, you know, private developments. We're not here to sort of support folks with various private developments. But the folks at Mass Clean Energy Center, which is a state agency, does have a website that talks about Community Solar. And what the, basically what Community Solar is, is not everybody wants to put solar panels on their roof. Not everybody can. I have a hip roof house at my house. There's not really any surface area for solar panels. But through Community Solar, you can subscribe to some of these operations that you basically are buying solar from somebody else. So, you can go through there and without having to put solar on your roof, you can make the plan a little greener by tying into Community Solar. So, at Mass Clean Energy Site, they have, they have these opportunities for folks to look at, opportunities to rent solar, buy solar from somebody else, and not have to put it on your property. So, they have a number of things on their site that actually talk about how it works, and those places where you can look at in the marketplace that are in the neighborhood here. You put your zip code in on their page, and it pops up the places that are in the neighborhood that you can tie into Community Solar. So, while I'm not going to talk about, there's one company that wanted to talk about, but that one company's not on the list presently, but they're now aware of that as well. So, Community Solar is a great opportunity for people to, you know, make the plan a little greener without having to do a lot of muss and fuss around the house. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. We're going to go back and take a look at the minutes of April 23. Did you get a chance to?
I did. Was that the reorganization of the board one?
No.
The only, the only thing I saw was on the day we organized the board, Chairman Shea did not accept a motion for adjournment. Chairman Robinson did.
That's interesting. I think that's the only thing I highlighted.
That was the only thing I noticed.
That, and...
Other than that, I was fine with both minutes.
So, 514 amend, did Chairman Robinson adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Or Chairman Shea opened the meeting?
Chairman, yes.
It becomes confusing.
Right. No, absolutely. Our appointment taker's been writing down my name for long enough.
I'm too learned how to spell Cornelius since I've been here.
It's in the Bible.
All right. So, 514 as amended?
I believe...
I would make a motion to accept the minutes of 514, 2024, as amended.
I'll make second.
Bill, you're off the hook on this one. I don't have to ask you.
Yes, I, Chairman, Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And we're going to go backwards to the 23rd.
I will make a motion to accept April 23, 2024, meeting minutes.
I'll make second. Falling asleep, so.
It's warm in here. Remember how cold it was when we started?
I like that. Excuse...
Mr. Shea. Oh, aye. Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And I will ask for a meeting to adjourn.
So, motion.
Second.
Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dan.